Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the Newcastle Town Board meeting of November nineteenth twenty twenty four. The board has been in executive session and we are about to convene our work session to be followed by town board meeting. So may I have a motion to open the work session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye? Okay, so we're going to start off with a discussion of a resolution in support of the town of Newcastle's environmental determination in accordance to CEPR for the decommissioning of Upper Minkle Dam. So Jill, would you like to start?
Yeah, so tonight we have with us both Sabrina Charney-Coll, our Director of Planning, and Bob Sioe, our Town Engineer. Um, who decided to start first? Bob or Sabrina?
We need to decide.
Ladies first.
I'm happy to review the resolution with the board, but just to put this in context, you previously have declared your intent to be lead agency as the, as it is our dam. You've taken ownership over that. You had tectonic engineering working on the project. You have reviewed the full environmental assessment form and I submitted to you a bit ago the part two and the part three, which does an analysis of impacts. What is new for you this week is the determination of significance. And the determination of significance evaluates each of the twenty something categories within the SEACER regulations to determine the impacts and how their impact that duerizer being mitigated. As you all know, this is a project whether it is a dam, an impoundment that will be lowered, will be removed, and the area is to be restored. So on its face there, you know, whatever impacts that will be seen will be mitigated. And that's what the job, the environmental determination goes through. I'm hap- through point by point if you want me to, but the resolution just kind of goes through the history of the project, goes through all of the decision making that's been made to date and declares the project to not have any significant environmental impact.
Okay, thank you Sabrina. And just to be clear for people who aren't familiar, this is the Upper Minkle Dam in the Sunny Ridge property that the town acquired. When was it, in two thousand one that we acquired? I think that's what. Um, yeah, that's in the resolution that the town took possession of.
It's out of that, right?
Well, not just the Upper Minkle Dam, but Sunny Ridge property, which is open land.
That's right. Right.
And so, and the DEC has deemed it a Class C high hazard dam. And they are supportive of the decommissioning and restoring the area to natural streams and surrounding wetland plantings, et cetera, as you mentioned.
And just so be clear, every time, anytime someone says a high hazard dam, that does not mean that it was impending doom, that it was going to be breached or broken.
Right, right, yeah. Just important to understand that's what it is. Okay, yeah.
Just to be clear.
Yeah, those are, you know, alarming words.
Yes, they're very, very alarming.
Right. I think it's also worth noting that the New York State DEC reevaluated dam status. And so, reassigning this dam high hazard status is relatively new in regard to DEC's regulations. We explored both upgrading the dam to meet DEC's high hazard dam standard standards and removing the dam. DEC is in support of us removing the dam, but it is in no way a danger to anybody. You know, removing that structure does not affect groundwater levels in the surrounding area. It does not impact any type of water supply issue. We are able to remove the dam because the dam located downstream in the town of Austin was upgraded and the associated work to upgrade that dam to a high hazard dam was conducted.
And that was the reason this became an A as well, because the approvals into the downstream dam in Austin made this a Class A as well. The DEC infinite wisdom.
And also, we did receive FEMA funding. Did we not through their, I see their Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant Program?
Correct.
And through Westchester County.
Yes.
So how much of the work do those grants cover?
Correct.
Cover? An increasingly shrinking percentage.
I'm sure. Well, you can let us know, but I'd be curious to know.
Yeah, it's, yeah. It gets to be a depressingly small percentage as we.
Well, better than nothing.
Yes, definitely better than nothing, but not as large as it should be. Bob, do you have anything to add to this? I know you do.
Yes, we're working with FEMA right now.
For?
New York State Department of Homeland Security, they're trying to get a little bit more money out of them. They're gonna fund about sixty percent of the engineering design. Keep in mind, too, guys, we do have a IMA with the county. Through a stormwater grant, and they're paying fifty percent of the design as well. We have to remind them in a nice way next year to make sure the Board of Legislators put that on their discussion to get IMA for the construction cost with the county. So that's something we should keep in mind to do in the future. And we're gonna be looking for other types of grants as well to cover the cost of the project, which has been escalating over the past several years.
Okay. So does anyone have any questions for Sabrina and Bob?
Any questions?
No, appreciate the update.
Okay.
Thank you both.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Aye.
And I'm assuming this resolution is, this resolution is on our current list of
Oh.
Aye.
Is it in the consent agenda?
I didn't see that.
I am not seeing it, but that's why I'm asking. It's not, so can we get that?
Yes. Yeah, the actual resolution is in the packet, so we'll just, yeah, we'll just try to.
Not in. Yeah, I see it, I see it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we can, we can work with that.
We just skip all the whereas, isn't it?
Yeah. We'll, we'll work with it.
Okay.
Get it.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, great, let's see. Uh, turning to administrative items, there's retroactive payment claims for checks dated November fifteenth twenty twenty five. Adoption of monthly reports for October and adoption of means. The next two items have to do with the moratorium that the board decided last meeting to pursue. Lino has been kind enough to provide us with two separate proposed moratoriums. One is authorization to set a public hearing on the moratorium regarding battery energy storage systems, also known as BES. And that's gonna be for January fourteenth of twenty twenty five. And an additional public hearing on a moratorium regarding the commercial solar arrays, also for January fourteenth twenty twenty five. So we'll be hitting the floor running next year. Next is authorization to establish the capital project and budget for the Millwood Park playground and tennis court, as well as the ADA access improvement projects. The creation of the capital projects allows us to take and pay the bills after we've done all the work in the area. I think the last part of the Millwood improvement is just the installation, I shouldn't say just, but the installation of the guardrails. They did a fabulous job out there. We're just waiting for that last ADA component to be installed. Next is authorization to approve the twenty twenty five refuse and recycling calendar and SAP insert. Mike Sicalli does a fabulous job every year of putting together the refuse and recycling calendar. And Fab takes advantage of the fact that nobody throws out that calendar to take and put an insert in to just alert the community to some of our projects. Next is National Diabetes Awareness Month. We're gonna be asking the board for permission to light the gazebo in blue in honor of National Diabetes Awareness Month. The next two are street opening permit bond releases. Work has been done to the satisfaction of DPW and we can take and release the funds that we were holding as a guarantee. Next is authorization to purchase and install replacement tile for the town hall lobby bathrooms. Believe it or not, they're actually, over the winter, we're planning on redoing the ladies' room and then the men's room upstairs. They're in dire need. Don't know if anybody's noticed, but.
Does the town board get to choose the fixtures?
Probably not.
Such a knife for design.
But we not.
Would you like to? I'll ask both of you.
Actually, you should do the tiling, Jeremy.
He's more of a gardener. Autorization to, for additional charges on the post issuance of a purchase order, and that's for precision trenchless. Does anyone have any questions insofar as our administrative items go?
No, I just wanna mention that last, we, at the last meeting, we discussed the moratorium on the battery energy storage systems and on solar array systems, so.
The commercial solar arrays, so these could be large scale.
Commercial. Yeah, so we, we did have a discussion on that and I just wanna make sure that, you know, wanna know if anyone has any further questions on that? Yeah, right, okay.
Yeah, just to echo what Jill said, the solar moratorium, you already have a solar, in your zoning code, you already have definitions of solar and various solar projects. This moratorium only deals with freestanding ground mounted solar and large scale solar collection systems or solar farms. So ground mounted, not ground, but like roof mounted are not included in this. This is really for solar farms and ground mounted only.
Great, and this is a moratorium to, for the purpose of studying environmental and health and safety impacts of these systems.
Yep, and also the zoning, see where these type of facilities would be appropriate, if at all, in the town.
Lino, would, like, the canopies that go, like, for parking that are solar, would those fall into us?
Okay.
If it's ground mounted, if it's considered ground mounted, it would cover this.
Okay.
It would be part of the moratorium.
Thank you.
But there's also waiver provision, so if there's, if someone feels aggrieved, they can apply for a waiver of the moratorium. And there's a provision, by law, you have to have that set forth, the moratorium. So that's in both the BESS and also the solar law. And both moratoriums just for, they're set for six months.
And that's six months from sometime subdued, so from January fourteenth or someday after that.
The time it's adopted, right, correct. Correct.
Okay, brief.
Thanks for getting those to us.
Okay, I think that does it for the work session, and we're a little early.
We said immediately follow.
Immediately follow.
I know, but we have some guests coming in to begin at seven, so we can start.
Immediately follow. At seven.
I see some trickling in.
Okay.
Six fifty seven, we're doing pretty well, actually.
Okay. All right, so may I have a motion to close, to adjourn the work session and open the town board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So let's go ahead with the meeting. Jill, do you have any announcements?
Uh, no.
No announcements. I'll reserve some of my supervisor's report for next, for the town newsletter, but I just wanted to say that we had a fantastic volunteer recognition dinner. Last Thursday, we honored Eric Nicolason. And I just wanna say that we are really grateful to all of our volunteers, that every, every year we pick one and Eric has done an incredible amount of, he has great contributions to our town and he's been a lifelong member of the, resident of the town. And he was actually on the town board for two years, starting in nineteen eighty, and then he was Newcastle Deputy Supervisor. He was a member of the Board of Assessment Review, and he's still a member. He's been a lifetime member of the Chapacua Fire Department. He's been a fire commissioner of the Chapacua Fire Department. He's been a lifetime member of CEVAC and member of the Rotary. And so, I just wanna recognize him here and thank him for all of his volunteer work and to say that it was a really fantastic evening. It was well attended and I wanna thank the administration. Jill, Sabrina, I mean Jill, Christina.
Oh, thank you.
I mean Sabrina, you do a lot too, but it was Christina and Lauren, so I wanna thank you for planning something really wonderful.
She was there, she was there.
Hey Lauren.
Yeah.
It was wonderful, yes.
And so, our town board members were there and it was nice to the CIR committee members as well. So, and I just want to also emphasize that we have a burn ban in effect in the town of Newcastle. And in fact, there's a statewide burn ban on all forms of open fires and burnings. And we just wanna emphasize extreme caution for everyone. Obviously, we have, we're in a drought, a state of a drought warning, that is, well, sorry, it's a drought watch. There are four levels of drought advisories. There's a watch, a warning, an emergency, and disaster. We're at the point of a drought watch, so we ask everyone to voluntarily conserve water. You can go on the DEC and DEP website to get ideas on what you can do, but just don't use water unnecessarily. We, I wanna mention that the Holocaust and European Rights Committee will be having their neighbors bench again at the farmers market this Saturday, November twenty third, from ten AM to twelve PM. It's a really wonderful program. There is a bench. Usually, a lot of people gathered around it, but if you sit on the bench, someone will come and sit next to you and you can have a nice conversation. It's a really great program for neighbors to get to know each other. So I encourage people to go by and say hello. Also, the Chapacua Fire Department is having a holiday food drive in partnership with the Pleasantville Food Pantry. And they're collecting donations through December fifteenth. There are bins at the Chapacua Firehouse, the Center Street Firehouse at Town Hall here near the police station. And anywhere else?
Not, no, I didn't.
Was there a bin, okay. Okay, and good news, the holiday lights will be going up. Is that right next week?
Right.
Yes.
Can we promise that? Am I speaking too soon?
I'm not hanging them, so I, you know, I'm a little reluctant to promise it per se,
Right, right.
but we have been informed that either Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday of next week, the lights will be up, so.
Okay, so that should be very lucky.
If they're not up, then we can just publish the telephone number of the company to and then never happen.
Yes. Okay, and we have some congratulations and appreciation to give out, but I'm not sure people are here.
Trudy, well.
Well, actually, I do see someone. You're right on time.
This was important.
Vicky, only on Thursdays.
Only on Thursdays. Yeah.
Vicky, sorry, that was up there. Vicky, before you wrap up your report, I just wanted to say that today, they actually changed it from a drought watch to a drought warning in our area.
Oh, okay, I did see it was a drought warning in other areas, but this was today.
Today.
Oh, okay, well, thank you for telling us and let's hope that it does rain on Thursday like it's supposed to.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Okay, I see some little foot, are they here?
There's quite a few.
There's a few.
Yeah, there's quite a few.
Okay, well.
Not sure where they are.
Since Evy's here.
They're awfully quiet.
Someone yelled, "Fumble", yelled, "Fumble" until you're coming back.
They are very quiet. Um, I just wanna start by recognizing Evy Rosen, who's here with us today. Evy reintroduced AOK Day to Chapacua, the Acts of Kindness Day, which she had introduced in twenty seventeen. And I just, I wanted to thank Evy. And we have, we have a lot of committees who implement many, many programs and we don't usually take time to thank them for every program at town board meetings, but I wanted to recognize Evy in particular because Evy is one person who came to me to reintroduce this program. And I just want to say that, you know, you don't need to be on a committee or have an official role in town government to do something really meaningful. And Evy, you did this on your own. And Evy did, I did ask the Committee on Mental Resilience, which is a new committee, to help out. And I was hoping some of them could come here today as well. But Evy, this was really your brainchild and we really appreciate your doing this practically as a one woman team and we're really very grateful. It created a lot of goodwill in town and it actually went for more than a day. People kept getting mystery gifts and it created a lot of buzz. And it was a lot of fun and it made people feel good. And I know that there's so much more to it than just, you know, a good time in making people feel good. There's a lot of research on the neurology of doing this type of work. And I don't know, you know, you can talk about it if you want, but I just really wanted to recognize you and present you with a certificate of recognition. You're so, let's, let's come to the microphone and we can all take a picture with you.
Oh my. Of course, my kids are all grown up and not here and they can't see this.
Right, but they'll see the picture.
Okay. They can watch it on video. We're recorded.
They're at work.
We record, it's okay. Standing on the couch.
Of course. We do this.
Can we?
Okay.
So, I, uh. Mm-hmm. I wanted to read this too. We don't have the microphone.
Oh, do you want the mic?
Yeah. Evy.
This is, this is to Evy Rosen, in recognition of your dedication to bringing Acts of Kindness Day, AOK Day, back to the town of Newcastle, bringing awareness to the emotional, social, and physical benefits of performing acts of kindness. Your efforts remind us that one resident, one individual can work to bring positive change to an entire town.
This is for you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I really love seeing those signs all around.
Me too.
I still see them.
Oh, yeah, that is.
And I have to, I have to sign.
Got to squeeze into guys.
So we're gonna take a picture? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, it was very kind of you all.
Kind of you.
Yes, the other one do it.
It is a pro-social behavior and there's a domino effect, so if I do something kind, you do something kind.
Some play, play it forward.
It is pay it forward.
Pay it forward, play it forward.
Thank you, Evy, you'll do this again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
They're so quiet. It's crazy.
I saw them going like this to each other. So they're being really.
I, I think that's like a special recognition. I agree.
Yes.
Can we ask them to come in?
Yeah.
Jill, do you wanna ask the football players to come in?
Sure.
I'm surprised they stayed outside.
And so, and really so quiet.
And so quiet.
I mean, so quiet.
So disciplined.
Oh, wow. Wow, you guys were so quiet out there. We had no idea that you were all here. I thought no one was here, I was worried. Okay, it is really wonderful to see you all. We have some very special guests today. We have the champions of the, now, Allie, you can tell me what the league is because you have a, you have a special person here, but we are welcoming the Titans. They are part of the Westchester Youth Football League, the five-six division, and they won the championship game of the season against Harrison. They won that game sixteen to zero, but they were undefeated the entire season. And we have them here to congratulate them on their win. But not just on their win, we wanna congratulate you for working so hard on a team together. You know, we know how important teamwork is and it builds a lot of resilience, knowing how to work with a group, working on the things that are challenges for you. You know, sometimes passing the ball when you wanna hold on to it, doing what's right for the team. And, you know, learning how to get up when you fall in many ways and for winning graciously and losing graciously and learning a lot of lessons that are going to really serve you so well in life. So we wanna say congratulations. We are so honored to have you here with us today. And I want to name all the members of the team and recognize all of you, and then we'll take a picture. I wanna congratulate Easton Caplow, Jackson Levin, Luke Schlessinger, Jorge Malbrano, Jared Davidson, Will Seek, Brody Applebaum, Max Telesco, Kayla Dolan, Maddox Melodossi, Adrian Heinz, Julian Goldberg, Austin Smith, Tyler Hill, Harrison Hu, David Ross, let's see, Calvin Shalaw, Amir Fatu, Chris Mandon, Akoski, Tyler Conrad. Hang on now, more? Charles Greshman, Timmy McGinty, Linus Shalaw, Wilson, Chris Dealey, Huge Sanchez, Lucas Paola, Owen Mickelson, Ben Witherell, Garrett Bruber, Tyler Lefkowitz, Andrew Rothman, Chase Salon, Conklin Butler, and Tyler McCaffey. Wow. And wanna congratulate the coaches, Eric Wilson, Alex Greshman, Chris Dealey, Kevin Caplow, Tanner Hu, and last but not least, team manager and former town councilperson, Lauren Levin. And I wanna congratulate and thank all the parents. We know this would not happen without your help, so congratulations and thank you to you two. So let's get a picture with the team, it's gonna be a big picture. Thank you.
Congratulations.
But in here, we just got here.
Fifth, sixth.
So those are the grains, fifth, 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 grains? This is how little I know.
One of the jar balls of these. And his wife who's walking out. Like super, super.
Oh, geez.
Yes. Okay, so let's get back to the meeting. We are, we've reached the public comment period, so anyone with a public comment, please come up to the microphone. Could someone put the microphone back?
Oh, okay. I can, Christina will do it, I guess.
Okay, please introduce yourself even though we know you and where you live in town.
Yeah, hi.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Chason, I'm a town resident, and that's a hard act to follow. These guys were amazing, couldn't believe how quiet they were. I've never ever seen that many kids so quiet. Anyway, very sweet. I'm here tonight to talk about the the some problems I had with the Maris survey, which I've also been hearing other people having these same problems. Um, I, one way, first of all, stress, this card that you got has nothing to do with me, had nothing to do with that card. Um, I did, uh, okay, I just wanna be sure.
You would never.
The the problem with the survey is to me, it feels like from the very first time I was on the walking tour, right through the workshop sessions, it feels like there has been a continuous narrowing of a sense that I'm being led in a direction. Um, I did participate in the spring envisioning walks, I was thrilled with the idea that we as a town could come together and talk about what we wanted, and the group I went on had a lot of good, small stuff. Everything from sidewalk cuts, better signage at town hall, walking paths, maybe a seasonal splash park for the kids. I even made a point of taking pictures of all the different things that all the different groups of the different colors had written down. I even put them all down and I have them here, um, lots of really good, small, important ideas. Then I went to the workshops and I noticed that already there was a narrowing, there were lots of options that were just gone, people in my group were saying, oh, this is I guess all I have, it already felt like we were being led in the direction. But I said nothing, I waited for the survey, which I by the way, never got, so I finally had to go online, and we didn't throw it out, we just never got it. Um, and one, just to go backwards, when I was actually doing the walking tour, um, I felt I was already being led, for instance, the the person leading our tour, who was one of, I guess, the consultants, um, when we went up before the town hall, people willingly talked about how the front area felt like it needed some aesthetics and some landscaping, but then he said, but what do you think about the building? They're like the building, and I thought, that seems kinda funny, that seems a little bit pushy. So then we get to the point where I actually see the survey, and, um, I really felt that by the time we got to the survey, it was very, very clear to me that there was an agenda here. Um, I finally get onto the survey and I notice that there are only two questions on the survey that allow residents to say, I don't want this development, number three and number eight. Everything else on that survey was skewed towards development. Question number four asks us to prioritize the changes, questions number five, six, and seven are about building housing. If someone skips answering those because they don't wanna build, already that kinda diluted, it's almost like asking someone, you know, um, are you always this quiet? If they answer yes or they answer no, basically, they answer the same way, and that's what this survey felt like. Ditto for renovating or rebuilding town hall. Question ten allows a respondent to say they don't believe town hall needs a rebuild, which I'm not an expert, I don't know, but, um, but then already question eleven assumes it will be substantially renovated, and question twelve goes right into what amenities people wanna see in their community center, and I'd like to remind the town that this community center that seems to be a big thing is a very expensive thing. I, it's, uh, first of all, already in town, we have a performing arts center, we have recreation programs at the high school gym, we have tons of programming space at the library, we talked about having something downtown, that's right across the street. Um, we have a senior center, we have an art center, we have programs in schools, we have at least four private swim and tennis clubs in town, and we have a private athletic facility. So we have a lot of opportunities already for residents. This incredibly expensive thing is only going to marginally change that, we talk about town camp, and I'm all for kids having town camp, but if you're talking about a building big enough to have all indoor programs for the town camp, you're in something the size of Boys and Girls Club in Mount Kisco, and that's just for the kids, so we are talking about a very, very expensive thing, but like I said, I feel like I'm already being led in that direction with this survey. Um, question number seventeen asks if the respondents would support development if there was no net loss to parking, which to me is another way of saying, will you accept the garage? Cause if you say, I support development, but I don't wanna net loss to parking, well, that sounds like a garage question to me. Um, so I think that if a person says, I don't want this development and I don't wanna garage, how do you answer a question like that? It serves to dilute the voice of those who do not want these things, you know, when I participated in the surveys, I talked about, and my group by the way, were all this similar, it wasn't that I was different. We were talking about walking trails around the parking lot, more trees, there are no trees in the little playground behind the town hall, nothing, in summer, that sun just beats down. People were talking about restrooms when town hall is closed, and we're talking about a splash park for the kids, just a little one for the toddlers during the summer, not a town pool, a splash park. Um, questions number twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three are also misleading because they all discuss financing, which assumes we want it. Also questions like, you know, do you wanna finance this through your taxes or have some outside, they didn't say outside developer, but do you wanna finance it through your taxes or not? Basically is the same thing, saying, do you want your taxes raised or do you want an outside developer to be paying for things? Well, we know how that would go, if an outside developer's paying and I'm paying for our community center. What we're talking about is selling our town land for housing. And of course, we have a ton of questions that are just exactly like that, a whole bunch of the questions, um, on that survey had to do with housing. Um, uh, so we have, I forget, I I've written down all the questions, um. Yeah, so so the point is that it seems to me that when I finished the survey, I said, am I, you know, I definitely witnessed how a long time, I have a different opinion. So I took an outsider who's valid and you should say, you know, whose opinion I trust, I took out all pages, I printed them. I said, look at this survey and tell me what are you reading into this? This person said, it appears to me that the town hall, the town board wants to build or substantially renovate the town hall. They wanna attach a brand-new large community center, they recognize that this is a hefty expense and that they're looking to maybe offset that cost by selling some of the land for housing, and that they also recognize by doing all this, they will lose some of the commuter parking and they may have to build a garage. This was somebody who wasn't related to the town, had no knowledge, was simply reading the questions, and I said, that's exactly what I see. So I feel that this is a very, very strongly-led survey, this is not an objective survey and it is not reflective of what the walking tours or the workshop sessions said, and I was in both, and I even took pictures of those walking tour comments. This survey is not reflective of that, this feels reflective of an agenda that is not coming from the town. And so I have some real problems with it, also, as you know, many people, myself included, did not get that survey. I had to go on to the Maris site, I'm sure lots of people won't take that time. So I really think that you should rethink this and realize that the town and the residents are not necessarily behind what this looks like it is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, let's see, any other public comments? Nope, okay, are there any, uh, comments online, Lauren? No?
No, I haven't raised.
Okay. All right then, I will, okay, so then we will close the public comment, I, uh, I will just mention to people watching that we will have a total of three mailings of the survey, we will, we've had a second full survey mailing and we'll have a postcard that'll allow people to take the survey online. Um, the survey was based on the responses we received during the engagement sessions, um, all the responses that people gave during walking tours, um, engagement sessions and pop-ups at the farmer's market are on the dedicated Envision New Survey website, people can go and take a look at that. Um, let's see, this, uh, survey was designed by Maris Poe independently. They took a look at what was said during the engagement sessions and they base all the questions on what everyone said, so this is a survey that addresses all of the feedback we received and not just, you know, a few people's opinions, uh, and people can respond as they wish. There will be further opportunities to write to the town board, uh, we're going to provide an email address where those, um, further emails can come in, I believe it's going to be to Christina so we can have a repository, was that?
Probably public comment. Oh, the public comment.
Or to public comment.
Yeah, public comments.
So if, uh, there's any feedback that people, uh, think they didn't have a chance to uh, convey on the survey, they'll be able to do that through our written public comments. Um, and that's really all I have to say, there are eighteen thousand residents of this town and the survey is meant for everyone to apply for, to apply to various, um, wishes and needs of of our residents, and we will wait and we'll hear what Maris has to say. They're a well-regarded survey company and they're doing this independently, so they will present their findings in public, um, at the end of the year. Uh, I'm not sure if, because we extended it, because we added a mailing, I'm not sure whether we'll be able to keep to that end-of-year, um, schedule, it may have to
I I find it a bit rushed, yeah.
go over to the first of, to the first of next year, because we did extend it, we we recognized that because of printing delays, the first survey went out later than promised, it was supposed to be out beginning of October. It arrived in mailboxes during the early voting period and we recognized that people had possibly thrown them out, so we had a second mailing that was not expected with a clear Envision logo on the envelope, and, uh, we're having, we're still having the postcard mailed out as well. So we'll have a total of three mailings as opposed to the original two, and we will add that written comment, uh, opportunity for for further comments. Um, and that's all, we will await the results and the board will see, um, what makes sense to us, we'll syn- synthesize the responses and, uh, we'll end up with a proposal to the community at the end of the day. Uh, okay. So. Let's see, let's move on to what is next on the agenda.
Public hearing.
Yep, we have a public hearing. Now we have a public hearing to amend the provisions of chapter nine, um, the code of ethics. So let's see. Lena, do you want to?
Sure, this is a, this is a local law, and probably characterized on this local law, which amends the qualification of ethics board members. So in the past, you had, uh, there were four criteria for, um, qualification of an ethics board member. One of them was that, and I'll quote, not more than three members of the Board of Ethics may be members of the same political party. Uh, this proposed local law proposes to remove that and to renumber, so there'll be three criteria, and that will be stricken from the the requirements of an ethics board member. Uh, I will say it's it's a, I've been doing this for a while and it's a bit unusual to have that provision in there, so I just thought it was a good idea to have it removed and to just keep the remaining qualifications as as they are. Cause those are fairly typical that I've seen before, but that one was an unusual one, so I would recommend it be removed.
Yeah, we did know that it it was unusual and, um, it was getting in the way of us, um, getting, you know, the best person that we felt, you know, was right for the position, and we always want to leave these positions open for the for the best person that the board think will will perform the duties of of the position. So.
I agree. It was, you know, in in our discussion as to vacancies and that this, that fourth criteria was brought to my attention, it was the first I even knew about it and it seemed strange to have such a such a requirement, it doesn't seem relevant, in my opinion, it shouldn't be relevant. We're asking people to hold themselves above any sort of political party and to focus on ethics and to be, for our community to be an outlier and have such a requirement wasn't sitting right with me, I don't wanna speak for anybody else, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary, and I think to Vicky's point, it it gets in the way of appointing the best possible person for our ethics board.
Maybe also posing the question of party affiliation gets dodgy, uh, when you're interviewing people for a committee, um, it just seems like an awkward question and maybe not even ethical to ask it.
Just shouldn't matter, right? Just shouldn't matter.
Yeah, it shouldn't matter.
That's the irony of that provision.
Right.
Yes. All right, but seeing that this is a, well, does anyone else want to?
I support the change, very simply, I support the change, one one
Okay.
party doesn't define their level of ethical interaction and understandings, so.
Correct.
Well, what?
I'm all for it.
I have nothing else.
Okay.
Thank you, Lena.
All right, so, um, would anyone like to make a pub, uh, well, let's open the public hearing, may I have a motion to to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so anyone with a comment, please, um, either come up to the microphone? Or. Okay, seeing that there's no one in the audience with a public comment, is there anyone online?
Nobody online.
Okay.
Not a hot topic.
All right. Well, in that case, I would suggest that we close the public hearing and keep the record open for written comments until Friday at noon.
Sure.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Okay, may I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to our consent agenda. Let's see, Holly, do you wanna start?
Yes, as soon as I find my.
It's okay, we can start, um, it's okay, we'll we'll come back around to you, um, Ali, do you wanna?
I move to adopt the items one through eleven as listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll we'll do the seeker separately.
What page is that?
Yes, it's.
It's in our. The backup packet. Pocket.
It's in our packet. Jeremy, I'll let you do it since you read fast, um, we'll we'll get to it, let's 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 keep going.
Okay.
Do you have it? I I have it, okay.
I'm, should should I do resolution, first resolution?
Yes.
I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims amount of five hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars, twenty ones, uh, twenty one dollars and fifty-nine cents, listed on the summary AP check registered and detailed voucher report dated November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed Friday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Number two.
Hang on.
Tell me, keep going.
Or do you want me to?
Wait, we are get, we're getting, um, a resolution that we didn't get in the resolutions packet.
Is this, is this it here?
So we have two, three, four, and five, and then we got two, three, four.
Yeah.
Yes, that's it.
Okay, so then, so then.
That's it. You have the, um.
Well, I think it goes from page one to two.
Turn that one around. And that's the final resolution.
Yeah, four, yeah, okay. Alright, so this is a resolution in support of the town of Newcastle's environmental determination in accordance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act for decommissioning the Upper Mickle Dam. Um, where whereas the town of Newcastle took possession of the Upper Mickle Dam in two thousand and one, as part of the forty-one acre sunny ridge property located at two thirty-one Fulton Dam Road. Um, and whereas, uh, there was a, uh, then New York State D E C Dam Safety Selection Regulations would require the Upper Mickle Dam to be classified as a Class C high hazard dam. Um, there were concerns, given that it was a Class C high hazard dam involving, among other things, high insurance premiums and long-term maintenance costs. Uh, therefore, um, whereas, uh, the town board evaluated the environmental significance of the areas where a moderate to large impact may occur, to discuss the Upper Mickle Dam decommissioning project negative declaration dated June fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Um, now therefore, it be resolved that the proposed project won't have any significant effect on the environmental draft T I S will not need to be prepared, and the impacts that could potentially occur during project activities will be mitigated with use of the best management practices. Uh, therefore resolved that this resolution take effect, uh, immediately. Okay?
Second.
You have a second.
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, Jeremy. Okay, that was good. Um, okay. John, do you wanna continue? We have, uh, number.
Number two.
Yes, number two.
Number two.
I move to accept the resignation of Pat Pollak from the position of Member of the Committee on Mental Resilience,
Just number three.
Committee on Inclusion and Belonging, and the Holocaust and Human Rights Committee, effective November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. The town would like to thank Pat for her dedicated service to our town.
Second.
Okay, uh, we will miss you, Pat, thank you for for your service to our town, all in, all in favor, please say aye.
Absolutely.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I move to authorize the appointment of June Boyle as Member of the Conservation Board for a term of two years, effective November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Don't leave that.
Um, go ahead, um, Holly, yeah.
Uh, I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the letter of agreement and general release regarding police officer number one six six.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the town of Newcastle to initiate legal action against transit construction to recover money due to the town in connection with the New York State D O T Route one twenty culvert replacement project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize change order with Maris Poll for an additional mailing for the total amount of seven thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think that does it for the resolution. Did we, did we miss anything? Jill?
We do, I think we've got everything.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are hereby adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.